Of course.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Kane, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Motion to approve the minutes from the special meeting held on June thirtieth, twenty twenty five. I have a motion. Motion by deputy mayor Hay, second.
Very good.
Seconded by trustee Plum, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. That brings us to our department committee reports. And the treasurer's report. First, before I get started with the treasurer's report. I just wanted to say a big thank you to Dee Yardley and Mike Phone and the gentlemen that work. We don't have any women working for the DPW at this time, so I'll stick with gentlemen that have done an excellent job with getting us through this weekend as far as garbage pickup. They worked around the clock and to Dee and Mike Cohen, they were, as soon as I texted them, I mean, they were already on it. So just a big shout out to them and thank you for all their hard work and their leadership this weekend, and also to the police department and our traffic control officers who did an excellent job managing the traffic that we had that came through the village. It was tremendous amount of traffic, tremendous amount of people, pedestrians. As far as I know, there were no incidents. And nobody got hurt. So an excellent job by them. So that brings us to the treasurer's report. Kate, do we have a copy of that or? Thank you. So this is the July seventh, twenty twenty five treasurer's report. The revenues to date total approximately seventeen million, five hundred and sixty thousand, exceeding the annual budget by ten percent. All income producing departments have exceeded their budget, except for the sewer department. Neighboring districts have fully paid their share of the fire and ambulance coverage. As far as expenditures go, expenditures to date approximately twenty million, five hundred thousand. This includes a three point eight million accounting reclassification of old capital projects to the general fund. Expenses excluding the accounting adjustment are sixteen million, seven hundred thousand, ninety-four percent of the annual budget. And if you think everybody has a copy, you have breakdown of the costs and description of the various departments and where they stand. So with that, I need a motion to accept the treasurer's report.
Is there, does it say that there's a five percent? Revenues, expenditures exceed revenue by five percent?
Well, according, well. If you take the adjustment out, we're slightly ahead in revenues as we are for what what the expenses expenses are. By about ten percent. So what are you looking at, Bob?
Final results versus budget based on twenty five. Maybe that's just percentage of the budget.
Well, if you take out the adjustment, that's including the adjustment that was made. You want, do you have an explain, you wanted to say something, Kate?
Thank you.
I can get a better explanation for you from Alex. Sure. Any other questions? I'm not sure I can answer them, but. Motion by trustee Corsh, have a second?
A second.
Seconded by trustee Plum, all those in favor?
Right.
Opposed, so carried. That brings us to the department.
What? I didn't get it. I'll catch up.
You didn't get what?
Treasurer's report, so I got electronic. It wasn't in my packet.
Kate, you want mine?
Yeah, that'd be great. Thanks. We're good, Kate. I got the.
That that brings us to the department reports, the police department, fire department, and ambulance corps. We'll get to the police department. For the month of June, twenty twenty five, we had eight hundred and thirty-three calls for service. We had four aggravated unlicensed operation, fourteen suspended registrations. That's that's quite a bit of suspended registrations. We had two open containers, one disorderly conduct, one criminal contempt in the second degree, one unlawful fleeing. I wonder what that was associated with. We had three DWI arrests and twenty-five motor vehicle accidents, and that report's from Chief Drake. We also had a hundred and forty-six uniform traffic tickets that were issued. That brings us to the ambulance corps, excuse me, ambulance corps. We had seventy-four emergency calls, five work nights, three meetings, fourteen training sessions, and one work detail for a total of one thousand, one hundred and fifty-four calls. They had, the ambulance corps had quite a busy, I don't have a fire department report. The ambulance corps had quite a busy weekend. As I was monitoring the pager in my phone, quite a bit of calls over the weekend. So they were, they were very busy, especially overnight. So that brings us to deputy mayor Hay with the justice court, parks and open spaces, and the planning board.
Thank you, mayor. Justice court's been busy too. Everything's picking up as your report indicates. Last month, total cases started at a hundred and fifty-seven, twelve were closed. Cases were nine penal law, hundred and twenty-nine vehicle traffic law, three violations of ordinance. There were five DUEs. Twenty-six beating cases in front of the traffic court, in front of the justice court. And along with the volume of cases in June, revenues have started to pick up too, as they have in years past. It's showing again that revenues and and the volume of cases in front of the justice court this year significantly higher than two years ago, three years ago, consistent with last year, though. I'll switch over to the Parks and Open Space Committee. As most of the trustees have heard already, the county confirmed that they have jurisdiction over the intersection of Brick Hill Road and Jermaine Avenue with County Route seventy-nine. And that's an important piece of information for us because it affects how we address the county and this whole project, this whole County Route seventy-nine project. Trustee Kane and I met with Representative Van Welker a couple of weeks ago before we received confirmation that the county was taking jurisdiction over the intersection. At that time, we asked her whether the county would consider a phase two of the County Route seventy-nine project to address the culvert under County Route seventy-nine, as well as the intersection. And the entrance to Mash Park. So we'll follow up with 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 her and her staff, and then eventually, hopefully, have our engineers engage again with the the department of. What are they, what are they, Public Works?
They're Public Works.
As a county.
Of the county.
To see, to see what path forwards we have. On the planning side. We received just this morning a proposal from L K M A for work on Hempstead Street and Bay Street to look at improving the bike path as well as sidewalks for those streets. We can address that at the appropriate time. You weren't received, you didn't get it in advance, but I think we have hard copies.
In the book.
Okay, great. And then FYI, not on today's agenda, but we'll have a special meeting in the future. We received, receiving the results today, several are in already from our RFPs for planning consultant. I think. So we'll take some time to assess, review them, and then.
Incredibly close. The dollar amount of those proposals. This is Havens Beach.
Havens Beach, that's, that's, we have three proposals we're having to do. Seven for planning consultants, and they're not, they're not true dollar amounts. They're more hourly rates and and qualifications. So we'll have to review them, assess them, discuss them, and then we'll have a special meeting to to talk about them, I'm guessing. If we don't want to wait all the way till next month to select one. And that's it for my reports today.
Okay, that brings, thank you. That brings us to trustee Corsh, sewer department, village grants, and the ZBA.
Thank you, mayor. Start off with the sewer department. For June, twenty twenty five, total gallons received in the month is two million, six hundred and sixty-three thousand gallons, forty-five thousand gallons of sludge waters removed. DMR reports are forwarded on oh, seven oh two. Suffolk County DHS inspection, our next inspection is set for the thirteenth of August. New York State D E C inspection is open. We have no complaints. Summary of operations, waste road treatment plant running well under all permitted levels. All grease traps, grease traps were inspected, two failures with others pumped as scheduled. Benson and Jering pulled the pump from the dry well for reconditioning a seal and the bearings on six-two, reinstalled on six-twelve. Benson was at for service call for an aeration actuator on basin number four. The flow from May to June saw an increase of two hundred and seventy-five thousand gallons. And that concludes the report for sewage treatment plant. And moving on to grants. We have booking at what's going on in the in the grant department at the moment, East Hampton C P F, we were awarded funds some time ago for the school engineering work, and currently we're in the process of executing those documents. Southampton C P F, we have a pending application there. There's still no word as to how that has been received. So we're just waiting to hear. We've had no questions and no outreach. There are no upcoming deadlines for East Hampton or Southampton at the moment. East Hampton C P F had an, had an August first deadline, but they canceled it. For planning purposes, we're going to target February for Southampton and East Hampton C P F next deadlines. One issue with East Hampton is now they're allowing water quality funds to roll over from year to year. In the past, if water quality funds weren't used, as is the case in Southampton in any particular year or cycle, they were put back into the main fund. And the upside of that was there was a sort of an impetus to use those water quality funds in 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 the current period. But the downside was if all, if there were not projects that had had merit, that money was forever lost to water quality. So it's a double-edged sword. So I think we'll have some discussions with with East Hampton Town, let them know what's what we have coming up, so that if there's an opportunity for them to plan their end, that we might be more aligned.
So even gonna, so it'll all stay in water quality bucket?
That's what I understand, that that's just East Hampton. So if they don't use everything for one year, that money will then roll over and stay in the water quality bucket, which is good on one hand, because the money stays in the water quality. On the other hand, there might be, they may, and I don't know this for sure, there'd be less impetus to to actually award the money and.
Although I think it'd be good for bigger projects like.
Bigger projects.
Especially since our treatment plant's in the East Hampton side.
Yes, exactly. And so all the services on the Southampton side, they're organized, they're run with all of this. So that's why I would like to poke East Hampton so that they have a better understanding of what our plans are. And that's something that we'll be able to develop together. So New York C F, the CFA, the consolidated fund application, we're going to reapply. Last year, we had, I don't have the exact number, it was right around five million dollars for phase two A. And we were not successful last year. We followed up with a meeting to find out where we fell short. So we'll see if we could manage to improve our application. I had a meeting with Jen Messiano to to discuss this last week.
Could you clarify what two A is?
Oh, sorry, phase two A, yes. For everybody here who doesn't understand what phase two A is, it's moving, it's expanding the the collection system south of Main Street, which would take it past Otter Pond, and we'd be looking at John Street and Bay Street and those areas that are along the water. And so we have, we already received from town of Southampton a number of years ago, approximately a million dollars for the engineering work there. That's ongoing. And this is to the application to New York State. We're always hopeful, but I just want to temper that hope with the scoring system, the nature of the scoring system is not really to our advantage this year, because we don't have any consent orders. There's, there are, our plant works really well. So sometimes that works against us when we're looking for grant money. But we want to stay in the game. We want, we can essentially take last year's grant. We have to make some changes to it, and we will resubmit it. It keeps us in front of New York State over the course of the year. So they understand that this project is still ongoing, and we're still very keen. And, you know, eventually we'll have all the engineering work done. We'll be able to include all of that in an application. So I figured that it's, it's, it's a good thing to do to keep that going. Deadline for that, I think, is about the twenty eighth to twenty ninth of this month for submission. It's the very end of the month. We're also going to apply to New York State. There's fifty thousand dollar grant available, which comes with a five percent local match. So we would have to come up with five thousand dollars for sewer engineering work for local solutions. So we're applying for this as an engineering study for the Redwood area, so that we could study Redwood and get ahead of what the requirements are there and have a, have a document ready that we could then use to submit for grant funds in the future. So that's going to happen. We spoke with Mark and Mark Wagner, and they're going to put together, work on the application with Jen Messiano for for that.
Could I, could I ask, is it, so this would essentially be for a decentralized?
Yes.
Plant for Redwood? Would it include engineering for collection system as well, or just the treatment plant? Because if it's decentralized, it could be for Redwood, but it could be other places.
Yeah, we would, well, the study would be is, you know, if we're going to do all of Redwood, are we going to do the perimeter of Redwood? Because the center of Redwood, depending on distance to groundwater, you know, as to how all that scores out. Right now, we really don't know anything. So this will give us an opportunity to study it and be able to make some decisions. I don't think this study is going to, it's going to, it's going to provide the information that we can use to make informed decisions.
So this is more about Redwood than about a decentralized plant. It's.
It's more about Redwood because we had to pick a neighborhood to study. And it seemed to me that Redwood in combination with the ability that maybe using, as we had discussed some years ago, Tommy John using some of silly farm as, as to create a wetlands area there, underground wetlands. So all of this will be teased out here. These are things we have spoken about at length, but we've never really sort of come to terms of what it really means.
And and now that we have an IMA, we can more seriously look.
Right, that we can have all of these conversations and sort of building on each other in a great way. The, this grant would be fifty thousand with a five percent match. So I think that, you know, for five thousand, five thousand dollars, it's a really good investment.
And this is the state, a state potential grant, right?
State potential grant.
The county also has funding. They tend to focus more on stormwater than sewage. But again, talking to Ann Welker.
Yep.
She's working on kind of shifting, expanding that focus.
We need to focus more on stormwater as time goes on because that's becoming, well, not even becoming, it is a huge issue. That concludes my grant report. And ZBA is, great board is working really well. I look forward to seeing it move ahead into the next, the next two years, as discussed, or as I planned earlier. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you, trustee.
Yeah, going forward, if the silly farm is, it will have its remote treatment plant there potentially?
It's not a plant. It's, it's a natural, there is a model of this, and we have to be careful how how we describe it. There's a model of this that, that IMAG did up island in a, for a convent. And essentially, from the perspective of somebody moving through silly farm, they see grasses, that it's not, there's no equipment, there's no, nothing above grade. It's, everything is below grade. And these are just, yeah, these are just ideas right now. So the idea of this is the, is the first step, so we can see what all of this really means in the real world.
And obviously, this would be using the latest technologies.
Sure, yeah.
Yeah, I would, I, I would hope that they'd also consider, you know, a decentralized plant as well, which are very small.
Yep.
And could do the same work. I mean, I think, because it's, again, two problems we face throughout this part of the village is stormwater.
Right.
Sewage.
Yep.
And there might be two solutions there.
I think if we're successful with the grant, I think the grant, the application will be broad enough that we'll be able to sit down afterwards, talk to the engineers and figure out how we want to apply this. So it's essentially, ideally, it's to create a local service area for Redwood, and maybe not all of Redwood.
Something separate from the centralized plant.
Completely separate, yes, yeah.
And and for an area that when water quality gets tested, we are concerned.
Yeah.
With the water because of the, because of the current and old sewer systems. So this would be.
And this could also be a model for other areas of the village. And it seems like it's a nice contained area. And we'll see.
Surrounded by water.
Surrounded by water, with quite an elevation towards the center.
And silly farm is perfectly located to potentially be helpful.
If it can be helpful, it's a win-win.
Would this, the Main Street extension up towards the pond?
Yes.
Theoretically, which would take precedence, which?
These would be done, one doesn't depend on the other. There'd be separate funding. You know, we're applying to New York State for funding to execute. We have funding for engineering for phase two A, as we say, extending the service collection area south. And this would be a completely separate project. They really don't interact at all, you know? We just need to keep asking for funding.
It goes in parallel. Whoever gives the most money?
Yes.
Sewer orders on Main Street. I know we tested the water down there, and it doesn't make any sense. Where could it be coming from? But maybe it's just water standing and catch bases or something.
I don't know.
Okay.
And the other thing is, so we, the go-ahead letters were sent to both contractors. I'm not sure if we reported that last month.
Great.
So that talk is ticking now, and we're working on waiting for both contractors to submit their schedules. Once we have those schedules, we'll be organizing meetings for the affected homeowners. So that's.
It's exciting.
That is exciting. It really is. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee Corsh. That brings us to trustee Plum for Public Works, Board of Historic Preservation, Architectural Review, Mash Park, and the Environmental Advisory Committee.
Thank you, mayor. As you mentioned, they did a great job this weekend, Public Works. That was sort of a carnival, but they were out there every day staying ahead of it. It was, I didn't see a single overflowing garbage can the whole weekend, so.
They were, they were like right at the cusp, like the garbage pails got full, they showed up, emptied it.
Yeah, it was awesome.
Multiple times too. I think it was like three times a day.
Yeah, so congratulations to them. Otherwise, the report, Joel's Lane has been milled and resurfaced. The crosswalks around the schools have been painted, twenty no parking posts and sign installed on Glover in compliance with local law, the change of parking there. All roads continue to be swept. Approximately seven hundred feet of water line trench and installed at Havens Beach. Approximately four hundred fifty feet of two-inch poly conduit trench and installed at Havens Beach as well. Asphalt repair and patching continues as needed. Tree pruning along village sidewalks and around traffic control, control daisies continues. The parking signs have in place, and I get the sense that people are catching on of what they're supposed to do. Cleaning and painting the antique post light continues, and additional refuse collection in the business district as needed, as we just mentioned. In terms of the Board of Historic Preservation Architect Review, I'm really happy that we have some new members, not to disparage the older members, but I think it was time for a new view of the whole thing. And so I'm looking forward to this new, new, new crew. Mash Gushman Park, I haven't attended a meeting yet, so I don't know. I have nothing to report there. An environmental advisory committee, Mary Anne's been off in the universe someplace like she didn't send me her.
Okay.
I think they have been more or less dormant this month. And that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Plum. That brings us to trustee Kane for Building Department, Harbor and Docks, and the Harbor Committee.
And so first, just to follow up on trustee Plum's comment about the installation of the water lines at Havens Beach. It was really the Friends of Havens Beach that put that request in this spring, so that the boat, the people who launched their boats there and bring them out, you know, predominantly smaller sailboats and even paddleboarders that now, and then the people that store their vessels there, that they now have that access to water. So they're very grateful. Yeah, just to get the saltwater off and the sand off, and it's just, you know, better for taking care of them. So a thank you there to, to Mike and team who who did that. With regard to the finances of the harbor, we, the number that we came in with for this year was a hundred and three thousand, three hundred and one. That's versus last June of seventy-eight thousand, seven thirty-seven. And so year to date, we're running at a hundred and ninety-five thousand over two thousand twenty-four, just to give you those total numbers. It's a million, seven hundred and thirty-three thousand odd versus a million five. So as, as I read the report, you'll just see how busy we are, you know, having, you know, the weather was a little iffy in June, so there were some weeks that weren't as good, but the reservations are still extremely strong. And most weekends are, we're completely booked for the season, which is great. In the Outer Mouring Field, we have twenty-five Outer Mouring Field checks that were done during this past month. The average number of boats in the Outer Mouring is twenty-eight, and the anchored boats is about two and a half. So those numbers seem to be, you know, pretty consistent. There, you know, we are very comfortable with those. So just for everyone to know that. The average number of boats, sorry, the, the numbers that on the marine sanitary device inspections, there were fifty-four inspections with one summons was issued where the vessel did not have their Y valve in the proper position. We continue to, the team continues to distribute the plastic ties to make sure that everything's secure and educate all the bone owners, which it seems to be, continued to be well received. The one thing, there were thirty-four marine patrols conducted in the month of June. Our team has really had to make some changes to their schedule so that they could be doing a lot of checks in the early morning. And this is the fishing area. So this just continues to increase. So they conducted seventeen of these environmental law inspections, checking numerous individuals. There were eleven summons that were issued where people were in possession of undersized species, and four summons were issued for people who did not have a fishing license. So this seems to be to something that we're trying to be on top of and educate everyone and to, you know, keep it in order as best, as best as possible. There was one disabled vessel that was assisted with by the team. And so, as you can imagine, they continue to be very busy. With regard to the building department, year to date, the dollars were five hundred and ninety-five thousand, one hundred and seventy-six. That's slightly below, about two and a half percent below the year to date for two thousand twenty-four, which was six hundred and ten thousand, nine hundred and forty. So basically, we can call it flat. And if you looked at just the month of June, we took in revenue of a hundred and ninety-one thousand odd, and that was versus a hundred and thirteen thousand the year prior. So as we know, it's month to month and just depends as permits go out, or where big numbers can come in when construction is completed and we have that true up and getting that, those payments coming in. If you look at the activity of the building department, there were twelve building permits issued, fifteen new rental permits. None of them were owner occupied. There were fifty-eight inspections and twenty-three certificate of occupancies, eight notices of violation, and one stop work order. With regard to our fire marshal and code enforcement, Bruce was very busy, thirteen complaints taken and addressed, twenty-two fire safety inspections. There were thirty-two violations that were issued, so that number has gone up. There were fourteen special events applications reviewed. We know that's a, this is the busy time of year, so that'll continue. And there were technical assistants of twelve and eight night shifts and weekend shifts that were completed. And last, where there were four outdoor dining applications reviewed. And so that all seems to be in order. And that continues, you know, we have the new member on the Harbor Committee who we'd like to welcome, and we want to thank everyone for all the work that they've done in the past.
Thank you, trustee Kane. That brings us to public comments, fifteen minute public session. Input for comments and questions, limit three minutes per speaker. Oh, motion to accept department reports.
Salute.
Motion by Trustee Corus, have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Kane, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. That brings us now to our fifteen-minute public session. Have anybody on Zoom? All right, so that brings us to, you don't have any introduction of laws, no public hearing. We have a continued public hearing, which is the local law to amend the code, chapter two thirty-five, streets and sidewalks, two thirty-five dash eight, displaying goods and wares to allow for the limited display of goods and wares on the village sidewalks, seen as the do we have any public comments on public hearing? Um no? Do I need a motion to close the public hearing?
Salute.
Motion by Trustee Plum, have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Kane, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Hearing is now closed. We have a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Motion by Trustee Corus, have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Deputy Mayor Hay, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Now, it's now a local law. That brings us to discussion items. Do we want to do the secret review now or? I think we should do it, yeah. Why don't we do it now?
And the action I know for this resolution of three.
Yes.
Okay, that brings us to resolution authorizing the mayor to sign an agreement for L K McLean Associates, D P C L K M A, to provide additional transporters, excuse me, additional transportation engineering services. And this is, you know, as we've been getting complaints about traffic and speeding and issues in the village, this is what you had spoken to about, Bob. And a lot of us, especially me, being on Hempstead Street. Hempstead Street from New York one fourteen to Bay Street. Also Bay Street from Hempstead Street to Long Island Avenue, Main Street. And Long Island Avenue from Bay Street, Main Street to Garden Street.
Part of those are bike lanes, the, the detour off of one fourteen to connect them, that in a way that's a little safer as well, as well as to improve pedestrian ac- access and pedestrian traffic there.
And one thing just to add in there, um you know, as we uh redo A Doc, we will be extending that boardwalk. Um and we hope, we had a call with L K M A last week. Um we hope to be having the submission to the permits for D E C in the next two weeks, I would say, to, to submit. Um but we were looking at those drawings, so that, that'll come into play with the safety of, for pedestrians.
So it says, be it further resolved that L K M A shall provide such services at a cost not to exceed fourteen thousand, six hundred dollars. So I need a motion.
I'll move it.
Motion by Deputy Mayor Hay, do I have a second? Seconded by Trustee Plum, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. That brings us now to resolution adopting a standard workday and reporting resolution for elected and appointed officials.
What does this mean?
This is for, this is for the retirement system.
I think pardon?
The New York State Retirement System is requesting that few of us, um myself, Dee Yardley, the mayor, Carl Iris, and Michelle, who are not part of the union, to um adopt our standard workday and reporting.
Doesn't affect us trustees?
For ours. They did not select our names.
Okay.
They, they really want to know how many hours they work at this job?
You have to spend more time writing it down. No, it does not.
And from your perspective, it's, there's, is there any rhyme and reason of why they picked who they picked and who they?
They sent us a certified notification to um establish this with these specifics, five.
Interesting.
So I have a motion?
I'll move it.
Motion by Deputy Mayor Hay. So carried. Wait till they get my report. And Dee's, I'm sure Dee is like
Really?
Twenty-four, seven, that guy. So you want me to wait until uh?
I'm not on mute. I, I sent him an email. I don't, I don't know which number is um.
I'll text, I'll text Mark.
I guess we'll, we'll skip Resolution Three and move on.
Sorry.
No worries.
So we have a resolution for Mayor Gardella to sign the proposal with I M E G to assist the village with submission of the required categorical exclusions. Request information package to U S E P A relating to a congressionally-directed spending grant for sewer shed K and L. And says, wow, okay. Be it further resolved, the fee for this proposal is not to exceed thirty-five hundred. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Trustee Corus, second?
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Kane, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. We need authorization to approve the following outdoor dining applications for twenty-twenty-five. That would be LT Burger on sixty-two Main Street and Vince or Vin at twenty-nine Main Street. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Trustee Kane, I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Plum, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Robert J Drake, Chief of Police, requests authorization to hire Adam Benson for the position of traffic control officer at the hourly rate of twenty dollars effective July eighth, twenty-twenty-five.
I'll move it.
Motion by Deputy Mayor Hay, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Kane, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved.
Mayor, if I could just interject, uh Mark said he unmute did not work. He'll try again. Tony is here also unable to unmute.
They're on by phone, so I don't.
Star six, if they're on by phone, let me do that. My pound six, actually. Sorry about this.
No, that's all right.
Okay, they're not our technology consultants.
Because the unmute doesn't work on Zoom. On the phone, you have to do pound six, so.
Interesting.
Cause we're all learning.
We have accept the May twenty-twenty-five bank reconciliations and collateral report.
I'll move it.
Motion by Deputy Mayor Hay, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Kane, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Carrie Garapi, Secretary of the Sag Harbor Volunteer Ambulance, requests authorization to add Sam Harrison Cohen to the insurance rolls effective July eighth, twenty-twenty-five as a probationary member. I'll make that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Kane, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. We have action items, special event, and special use permits. Kathleen Colan of Lark to Long Island, I forget what's that, if I said that right, requests authorization to have midsummer at the Manor at seventy-seven Bay Street, Paul Maria Retreat, July thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five from four-thirty to eight-thirty P M. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Trustee Kane, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Corus, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Kristen Santori of the Church requests authorization to have the creatives of color fundraising at forty-eight Main Street, the church, on August twenty-third from nine A M to five P M. Also requesting permission to place a sign on the grassy area of Long Wharf, edge of Route one fourteen and beside Mash Park, from August ninth, twenty-twenty-five to August twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five. Do I have a motion?
I'll move it.
Motion by Deputy Mayor Hay, second?
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Corus, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Taylor Walsh and T- Tyler Whitman of forty-three Garden Street, request authorization to have their wedding ceremony at one ninety-two Main Street, the Custom House, on September twenty, twenty-twenty-five from five-thirty to six-thirty P M. Do I have a motion?
I'll move that.
Motion by Trustee Corus, second?
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Kane, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Rachel D of Mash Park requests permission to have the five K on September twenty-first, twenty-twenty-five from eight-thirty A M to eleven A M. Also requests to place signage on the grassy area of Long Wharf, edge of Route four, one fourteen, and beside Mash Park from September seventh, twenty-twenty-five to September twenty-first, twenty-twenty-five. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Trustee Kane, I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Deputy Mayor Hay, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. We have the approvalment of, to pay the bills. We have warrant number two with the amount of four hundred eighty-two thousand, nine hundred twenty-seven dollars and eighty-nine cents. Warrant number four in the amount of four hundred thirteen thousand, two hundred and four ninety-five cents. We have warrant number six in the amount of one hundred thirty-three thousand, eight hundred seventy-three dollars and eighty-one cents. And warrant number eight in the amount of three hundred thirty-eight thousand, three hundred twenty-three dollars and sixty-five cents. Do I have a motion to pay the bills?
So moved.
Motion by Trustee Kane, I have a second? Seconded by Trustee Plum, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. How we doing with our?
Mark is on, and I'm muted.
Awesome.
Hello?
Hello.
Mark.
Hey, how you doing?
Good.
Good, good. Uh good morning, everyone. Uh I got a, a good idea of what happened over the weekend. Sounds like it was a very busy holiday.
Yes.
Seems like there, everybody came through without getting uh blown up, which is always good. So uh the, the E A F, I think Ali Tony is on as well. Uh this, this, the E A F is in regards to the application uh that Trustee Corus uh talked about resubmitting for Phase Two A. Uh last year, we had a draft engineering report. We didn't have any plans uh at that time, in the very early stages. So the, the plan is to come back. We updated the engineering report for Phase Two A. We have drawings that are advanced to, I would say, about seventy percent. Uh the uh historic preservation of the New York State has given us a letter, no issues. And we completed the long form E A F uh last, and, and that is the topic of discussion. What the E A F does, the long form assessment form, uh discusses the project for A. And what we think is appropriate is for the Village Board to uh declare itself lead agency to review the E A F and the attachments. And the Phase Two A, just to go over it quickly, Phase Two A encompasses about forty-seven acres of the village. Hundred and thirty-seven parcels, hundred and twenty-one of that thirty-seven are residential. Eleven are vacant, five are non-residential. It's estimated that forty-three thousand, two hundred sixty-four gallons of wastewater would be generated within Phase Two A. And that's uh about equivalent eighty-five hundred and sixty pounds of nitrogen for that. Phase Two A uh start back over by, on the uh northwest area on Redwood Road before it crosses over into Redwood and comes uh to the east. A piece of it uh attaches to Main Street, and it encompasses Howard, Meadow Lark, Fabio Avenue, Glover Street, and uh Greens. And Phase Two A is part of the uh other pieces of Phase Two, which would encompass Phase Two B and Phase Two C. That would be uh looked at at a later date. The idea was to not bite off too much on this and have the uh, the ask for Phase Two reasonable. We've completed the engineering report, updated it. The current cost for Phase Two A is thirteen point eight million dollars for the work that would take place in the villages right away. It'd be low pressure, a low-pressure system, L P S. And that would be pumping uh collecting and pumping water up to sewage up into Main Street that it would flow by gravity down to the uh, to the wastewater plant. Phase Two A uh would basically uh consume the balance of the or close to the balance of wastewater availability once K and F. And, and the idea is, is not to, not to get too close to the uh, on paper. The plant can do, can accept an additional ninety thousand gallons per day by permit. But we strongly believe uh that the actual value of wastewater that can be received at the plant plant function probably, probably less than that ninety thousand value. Uh Tony here can uh go through, I think the long form E A F is about twelve, fourteen pages. You wanted to go through it, or you could review it. Your time, and we could come back at a later date to see if they had any questions regarding the particulars of environmental.
Should we review it now or?
If you want to adopt it today, you should review it.
Okay.
Gals per day, gallons per day.
Yeah.
Okay.
We're gonna review it, uh Mark, so that we can adopt today. So you, you could review it with, yep, now.
You, you want to go through it now?
Yes.
True. How long you think it's gonna take? I'm just curious.
I would say your, your eyes will probably start closing over in about fifteen, twenty minutes, but I think we could, we could do that. Are you on the line, Tony? Are you there?
Tony's not able to unmute.
He's not able to unmute.
Oh, okay, so gonna have to bring up the.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, it worked this time. Last time it didn't work twice. For some reason, it worked this time. Yeah, I can go through that. Uh good morning, everyone. Yeah, so let me just back up before I go through the full environmental assessment form. Uh just to recall that sewer shed K and L gone through the same process, and they both uh were completed using the full environmental assessment form. Uh but if you look at the secret uh procedures and regulations, uh extending sewer is actually a type-two action, which means it doesn't really require a secret process. However, uh this was completed simply because we want to ensure that we looked at every little pieces of uh possible impact, so that uh the project is uh, it's well-vetted. And hence, K and L was done that way, so we went ahead and did Phase Two A the same way by filling out the full E A F. All right, so, so full E A F, three parts. I'll jump to part three first. Part, well, part one is basic information about the project and the setting. Uh part two has to do with impacts to various things such as groundwater, flooding, geological features, et cetera. And part three is the final determination. So let me just go through part three first, and then we'll come back to uh part one and two. So for part three, we basically determined that this project, Phase Two A, would have no significant impact to the environment. All right, so go back to part one now. Uh so part one has to do with, as I said, the project basic information. So this is Phase Two A, low-pressure sewer. Uh it's gonna require uh several um approval. One is the Village Boards, you guys. Second would be the County Agency, which is Suffolk County Department of Health. And then third would be New York State D E C for the sewer expansion. Uh that has not been submitted yet, uh somewhat because we, we have to wait till the engineering reports completed and the plans of specs completed, then we'll submit that. There will be sometimes two. All right, so planning a zoning, uh we would fit the zoning process simply because uh the entire village is a sewer service area. All right, so planning a zoning, uh, would fit the zoning process simply because, uh, the entire village is a sewer service area. So there's no issues there. Uh, so aside from that, basically it spells out the, the, uh, basic operations, et cetera, the background information on the part one. But I'll skip over that now and just go to part two because that is the most critical for the full EAF. All right, just give me a second, let me scroll to that. And then at the end, obviously we open up for questions. Okay, so part two, part two of the EAF, the full EAF has to do with identification of potential project impacts. The first question would have to do with impact on land. So the, so the question is proposed action may involve construction on a physical alteration of the land surface on a proposed site, that would be a yes. We've gone through the sixteen or so questions after that and determine that the there's, this project would have no or small impact, uh, to the, to the, to the land itself. Uh, so, so I'll go through some of those questions. I won't go through every one of the questions on the impact on land. Uh, so, so for that, under A, the proposed action may involve construction on land with depth of groundwater is less than three feet. Yeah, we, we are having some land disturbance, but it won't have, uh, major impact. Proposed action may involve construction on slope of fifty percent or greater, no, not likely. Uh, so, so the, uh, EAF actually only have, when you say yes or no, that, when you say yes, only have three, uh, two scenario you can check on. One is no or small impact may occur. A second one is moderate to large impact may occur. So everything is, is really no or low impact. All right, so that was impact on land. The second question is, yes.
If I jump in, it's, it's important to, that the land that we're talking about is, all this work is taking place within the village right away. It's, it's in streets. It's not on any virgin land or any, it is in proximity in, in some areas to wetlands, but the, but the work itself is done within, within the village right away, existing.
I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah. That's good interjection, Mark, thank you. All right, so moving on from impact on land to the second question, which is impact on geological features. There are no real geological features, uh, at the project work site, which is again what marks that is really the right away of all the streets and roadways. So that question would be a no. Question three, impacts on service water? That would also be a no because we are working on, on the roadways. Uh, there will be erosion settlement control measures in place. Uh, so moving on to, um, three then. Uh, so number four, impact on groundwater, that would also be a no. Uh, we are digging open trench, but there will be no impact groundwater. We laying, uh, low pressure sewer pipe, not too far into the ground. If there are any groundwater contamination, it would have to be, uh, de-watered. And we have to go that far, but again, that will not be an impact groundwater. We actually be remediating groundwater at that point. So question on impact, I want to be a no. Impact on flooding would be a no also, some because we not changing gradient of the, uh, the roadways. Uh, so it'd be just open trench installed and backfill and refinish the, these, the roadway as the same as before. So again, impact on flooding would be a no. Impact on the air, uh, that would be a no, there's no, uh, actual emission source. There is some temporary emissions source of it, uh, during construction, something because from heavy construction equipment. But that's nothing to do with the head, uh, a regulated air emission source. So question six says impacts on air. And it says the proposed action may include a state regulated air emission source, which in this case is, is a no. All right, uh, question number seven, impact on plants and animals. It says the proposed action may result in the loss of floor and fauna. Again, that would be a no, simply because we're working on the roadway only. We're not taking up any, uh, uh, vacant land or forested area. All right, question number eight, impact on agricultural resources. The proposed action may impact agricultural resources, that's the question. And that would be a no, again, we're working on the roadways only. Uh, question number nine, impact on aesthetic resources. And the question is the land use of the proposed action are obviously different from or in sharp contrast to current land use pattern between the proposed project and a scenic or aesthetic resource. That question would be a no for the same reason stated previously. Question number ten, impact on historic and archaeological resources. The proposed action may occur in or adjacent to a historic or, or archaeological resource. That question is a yes, simply because there are some archaeological or historical sites nearby, but impact is not expected. Uh, we did gone through SHPO, we did get a state historical preservation office determination. And the determination that's, is that there would be no impact. However, they will want a, let me just read this line. Uh, we have reviewed the project plan submitted. Based on this review, it is opinion that SHPO archaeological survey is not needed. And then proposed infrastructure improvement will have no adverse effect on historical properties. So that's their determination, so we're good to go with that. They do however require that if we were approaching any historical sites within ninety feet, that we would use what they call a gentle methods to avoid excessive vibration and cause harm. Okay, so, so the impact on historical and archaeological, uh, resource, question ten would be yes, but the determination would be a no or small impact may occur. That's what's checked off. All right, question eleven, impact on open space and recreation, again, it's a no. Same as the previous, uh, reasons giving, we are working on, on the roadways on the right away. Impact on, uh, question number twelve, impact on critical environmental area. The proposed action may be located within or adjacent to critical environmental area. There would be a no. So this whole full EF was done via the environmental resource mapper by DEC. And they actually, once you do that, it actually brings it, brings in certain, um, it, it actually fills in certain questions for you with yes or no. In this case, it's filled in as a no, so we're good with that. So question number thirteen, impact on transportation. The proposed actually resulted in a change to existing transportation system. Okay, that would be a no. Uh, question number fourteen, impact on energy. The proposed action may cause an increase in the use of any form of energy, that would be a no. Not at this point, we're just lowering, or lowering, uh, we're just installing low pressure sewer. Uh, just bear with me, we almost there. Question number fifteen, impact on noise, odor and light, uh, that would be a no. There may be some minor impact, uh, from noise during construction, but permanently it'll be a no. So, once the project's completed, uh, there'll be no, uh, any change to, uh, the permanent outdoor lighting in that area or noise or odor. Okay, question number sixteen, impact on human health. The proposed action may have an impact on human health and exposure to new existing sources of contaminants. This question was checked as yes, simply because one of the questions from part one uh, had, had to do with nearby hazardous remediation site. Even though this project has nothing to do with hazardous research site, part one and identify nearby hazardous waste sites, uh, the closest is eight hundred feet away. Uh, however, this was checked off automatically, off as yes automatically by the environmental resource mapper. So a note was put in that the question was a yes, only because question E one H from part one was because of nearby hazards remediation. So from question six, uh, even though with a yes, it will be no or small impact may occurred is determined. All right, question number seventeen, consistency with community plan. Proposed action is not consistent with adopted land use plan. That would be no, it is consistent, it is within the sewer service area, the village. Question eighteen, consistency with community character. The proposed project is, is inconsistent with the existing community character. Uh, that answer will be a no, we're not changing any, uh, characteristics of it. Um, we actually making it better by putting in, uh, low pressure sewers within right away of the roadway to remove nitrogen, so that answer will be a no. All right, so that is it for, uh, part two. Question eighteen was the last, and again, part three, we have determined that there's no significant impact from project, uh, phase two A. Uh, so that's really a quick synopsis of it. Uh, open up for questions or more detailed discussions at this point?
I have a question, it's probably more for Aiden and Mark than for Tony. Uh, I'm looking at the end of part one. Uh, it's, uh, after page thirteen of thirteen, I think it's numbered one, so maybe it's an appendix to part one? Two maps on it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
This is showing the, looks like on the, that map on the left is showing the scope of the collection system. And my question to you, I apologize, but, um, why, why aren't we, I thought, because this ends in Glover Street, it looks like. And it doesn't, I thought it was going up Main Street as well, but it ends way earlier on Main Street and it's extending far on Glover Street, especially when we're thinking about using other solutions for Redwood and not hooking that up the central system. Why, why wouldn't we extend this project up Main Street rather than extending Glover all the way to Redwood?
That's a fair point, so I'm trying to read this here. So you could stop
on Long Island Avenue potentially?
Mm-hmm.
And use that, you know, if you.
And to keep coming down to, towards Otter Pond.
Right, and get to the operations center theoretically, close to it at least.
Yeah. I mean, it, it could be the number of houses you can pick up per, it's hard to see on this map how many homes as you extend south towards Otter Pond, you're right, laying a lot of pipe and there's not too many homes left and right, but I do agree that you could take, where, where has, for Vitali Sili, that whole area, that could be part of a, of, of, of a redwood project.
Right.
So if we were to trim that there and then because getting south of, I mean, even though there are no houses to pick up left and right, that's still, I think in the long term, it's still important to get south.
Because you can pick up Palmer Terrace in Oakland eventually too.
Exactly. Can we change that map without making a huge difference or does that, would that trigger having to redo?
No, I mean, we, 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 we have time, the engineering report would have to be adjusted. Uh, the phase two A matches up with the grant from the town of Southampton. At that time, we weren't looking at, although silly had been discussed on and off for the last several years, it was not hard and fast as a.
Cause that grant, yeah, that grant opportunity just came up. It's rare that New York State has opportunities for engineering work, so we jumped on it because it would help. So do we just let this go? I mean, how, how much are we tying our hands right now for the future by doing this? I mean, we have a, an approaching deadline of the end of the month for the, for the grant application. And it's a dynamic world, so things keep changing.
Yeah, uh, it's like, all, all the drawings that we have to date match this service area. And that would be, that would be a bunch of work to revise those plans and profiles.
And these are, yeah, these are plans that were approved by town of Southampton, so that we got the grant for the engineering work.
I guess my, my next question, how long would it take to? What is the next stage? Is it, are we going down main or not? Um, because I, if we're gonna wait years for that, that's a problem too, that we want to address.
Yeah, phase, I'm sorry.
Well, I just think we should go with this the way it is. I mean, we're looking at a year to alter this whole thing. The, the, the DDIS and the rest of it, we'd have to go to Southampton, um, and we'd have to redo this whole thing. I, I, it, it, there is space and it seems to me this is a gravity fed system.
That's not, it's low pressure, right?
Low pressure.
Up to Main Street.
Low pressure and then ended gravity.
Then you could still tie in a, like, from silly into this system.
Yeah, yeah, silly, you know, but.
Yeah, excuse me, this is all preliminary, right? But we need to get the ball rolling on this in order for it to, to get the grants we need. I mean, we're discussing theoretically a system on silly farm.
Yeah, and that, that discussion didn't even exist.
Yeah, that could change the way this.
I guess that's less a concern for me than, than what's going on in Main Street. Because how, then my question becomes, because I didn't realize we were cutting it off all the way back on.
Just after, uh, just between Jefferson and Palmer Street Terrace.
But really, yeah, Howard Street, it's, that's where the line ends on Main Street. Uh, and we're gonna be, so we're gonna be opening up a segment of Main Street. And while, agree with the EIS that, or the EAF that you're not gonna be permanently impacting transportation, but we're gonna be digging up a portion of Main Street for a while as well as all those other streets. Um, I, 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 I was under the impression mistakenly, clearly, that we were going further down Main Street.
That's fairly high in there, high meaning like twenty feet elevation.
Howard Street, my house is, three houses in on Howard Street is twenty-three feet elevation, so it's probably a little.
Mine was right on main right there and it was like twenty and change.
Yeah, it starts to go back down, so that intersection of main and Howard is about twenty feet above sea level.
And then it goes back down.
Um, Main Street, as you go, uh, get up by the, uh, by the whaling museum, there, there's a crest, there's a high point there that you gotta get over for the flow to go down.
That's garden street.
To the south, that will be LPS also. We, we looked at that, uh, before we, before we divided into three pieces. So the LPS will continue down Main Street and then you're gonna be able to pick up in phase two B, you'll be able to pick up, uh, both, on both sides of Main Street. Both sides meaning town of Southampton and town of East Hampton. And then the last piece of phase two C would be the lower, the lower part going all the way down to, uh, south to Hildreth Street and a little bit west to, uh, I believe it's, uh, on John Street.
So Mark, I've, so. Correct you there, I think if you're going down Main Street, you're not picking up any of East Hampton. That's both sides, you're still in Southampton.
Yeah.
Right.
Ri- right, right now, there'd be a small, there'd be a small piece of town of East Hampton, right, at a little piece on Union and Jefferson, those is that are basically adjoining Main Street.
That's part of, that's part of Allen K, I thought, that was this current project, we're not this planned project, right?
No, Allen K are, uh, not, not, not in this area. K, K is, uh, is to the northwest, Spring, Ross, Garden, they're not, they're not in, in two A.
Right, well, I understand that. So all the two ways we're looking at here is in the town of Southampton. You would have to go quite far east, the end of Lathan Street, right? You can see Division Street coming down there from the diagonal. So what do we want to do?
So, uh, can I, is, is, so are you saying that piece of Main Street going from, whether it's Howard up, is that phase two B? Or is that not even included in anything?
No, uh, Ha- Ha- Street is in phase two A.
I know, but Main Street, the corner of Main Street and Howard, up to, towards the park.
Oh, down, south, south, okay.
Yeah.
That piece that's not black on the map, um.
Yeah, it, it's, you're, you're right, it's approximately, it's, it's hard to see, but it's approximately Howard Street would be the southern border of phase two A.
Right, so my question is, is, is phase two B, does that include that last leg going south on Main Street?
Yes, phase two B goes down, uh, wideways goes down by. wideways goes down by built into silly, almost silly farm. Down in that area.
Wrong direction.
Wrong direction. Phase two B will be heading down towards Otter Pond.
Oh, Otter Pond.
Yeah.
Main Street.
Okay.
Yeah.
So what is the timing?
Wait, wait, let, let, let me ask the question this way. Where is Main, where's the rest of Main Street covered in your plans?
Main, Main Street is discussed, uh, in the engineering report. The, the entirety of two, phase two, which is two A, two B, two C. And then we elected to just talk about two A for, for this, but it will go down. It will go down, if you, two A, two B and two C are done, it will be, go south to, uh, all of Main Street, through a crossover Brick, Brick Hill Road and end up to the south approximately by Hildreth Street to the south.
Is that two B or two C?
That's two C.
What's two B?
Two B is, there's a piece of, uh, town of East Hampton, along Main Street.
It can't be, that can't be, Mark.
It's not Anderson.
It's not East Hampton.
Except for the long one.
Main Street doesn't touch East Hampton.
Oh, wait a minute.
Division Street, Division Street.
Yes, yeah, this is, this would all be town of Southampton, that's correct. But it would be the, two B starts to pick up on, uh, south of, uh, Howard by Pa, uh, Palmer Tier and goes down to, uh, that, you can see it on the map, goes down to just the tip, the northern edge of Otter Pond and the and the, uh, the western edge of Otter Pond is in two B.
Okay. And, and then do you know two C off the top of your head as well?
Two C would be picking that up from Brick Hill and heading south.
Okay, so it just keeps going down south on Main Street, basically?
Yeah.
Perfect, thank you.
And, and do we have a, and I, I understand it's all hypothetical, but if, if wh- what's the number of years out that we?
That's a great question. If you think that this is probably a thirteen, fifteen, sixteen million dollar project and we're, we're applying for five the second time around. These are, it's, it's really hard to put another limit on it. If we source other funds, which is an ongoing conversation, I, I think it's fair to say that so far our grants have worked out well, but I don't think that we can depend on grants to fully fund any of this down the road. And to that end, like Deputy Mayor, myself, uh, John Shaka and Charles are meeting to try and establish other sources of funding with the recognition that grants are great, but you can't plan on it.
Right.
You know, you can just get postponed by a year, which we did, we could get postponed by another year. But that's not to say we shouldn't keep applying for them. And I think it's important to keep the momentum going. And we'll have an opportunity, you know, the, the, um, redwood didn't, that conversation didn't exist three weeks ago. But the idea that we would ignore an opportunity to do engineering work. It's, that's what grants are like, you, you never know, you're not really driving your own car.
Jump on them when you can.
You gotta jump on them when you can, and then we're going to have to, you know, it would be a great problem to have if we had all of this money to do all of this work and we had to figure out how to, how to dovetail them together.
So just for clarity, for two, two A, we have the, the money we're applying for now is engineering studies.
No, it's not, it's for execution.
It's the execution of two A.
Of two A.
And that's with New York State now.
New York State.
And we've already gotten the Southampton approvals.
We got money though, so what we have from Southampton, we're still sitting on a two million dollar application that we've had no response on yet.
And that, is that limited to two A or is it two in general?
That's a really good question, I'll have to dig out, that's over, that's quite some time ago. So I, I, my feeling is it's two A because that's where the focus was. Um, the five million is two A and that's what was turned down last year, we're reapplying for that, so
That's the state.
That's the state.
Right, got it. Okay.
And we also will find that, I would imagine it's two A because it would be our local match. If some of that would be our local match for the state funds. Um, not having those docks in front of me, but it, it would make sense to me that it was.
Okay, that's helpful.
And so the engineering that I M A G has done is, is it only for, is it for all of two or is it just for two A?
Two A, Mark, correct? The engineering you're working on are all of two?
Now, when, when, when we got the grant, we, and then we said, uh, we decided to go to two A. We have, uh, reserved money for the engineering of phase two B and phase two C.
Oh, great.
So that grant, that grant that was given by uh, we, we'll, we'll probably have a little bit of additional cost on the survey because we, you know, you're going back again. But for the most part, uh, you're doing some things twice, but the engineering for the, uh, the right of ways to be in two C are covered by that town of Southampton grant.
Great.
That's what I, that's what I'd remember, that we had the engineering for the whole thing. And so I guess the question, it, it becomes, do we continue to go forward with the engineering for that while we're applying for?
I do, I think we keep moving everything.
Yeah.
Because we never know when opportunities are going to present themselves, you could get a federal opportunity.
You know, and we have
we just want to make sure that we're as prepared as possible, agreed?
I completely agree. Okay.
Yeah. Go ahead, Mark.
Yeah, I'm sorry, uh, I was going to say, one, once we get two A off the that's going to go, not only for the grant, that's going to go into the state for review, the engineering report and the drawings. We can then start, uh, the engineering on phase two B and two C.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it'll, it'll sit on the shelf for sure on the funding, but you might as well, uh, get it accomplished as, as that, covers that work.
Yep.
Thank you, Mark. Any other questions?
Yes, I don't.
Okay, need a resolution, thank you, both of you.
Thank you, you're welcome.
Thanks, sir.
So we need a resolution regarding SECRE for the proposed sewer extension action to phase two A sewer expansion. I need a motion. A motion by trustee Corus, seconded by trustee Plum, all those in favor?
Aye.
opposed, so moved. That then brings us to public comment section, fifteen minutes, public session, input for comments and questions, three minutes per speaker. If you have anybody on Zoom. Brings me to a motion to adjourn.
I'm of it.
Motion by Deputy Mayor, seconded by trustee Kane, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried.